Oh.
Yeah, that's better now. Okay, great. It is six o'clock on Tuesday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, we do have a form I will call to order. And, uh, seeing no pastors in the... Hey, there's, uh, uh, one of our chaplains. Would you mind giving our indication? Chap, if you don't mind? I know, I just gonna call him. Well, if you do, I will if you won't, but I mean, you did such a good job. You would, uh, if you will, uh, rise to our invocation and our pledges, that'd be great. Captain Winship.
Join me as a prayer. Well, just to tell me, Father, we come to you this evening, Lord. Thank you for this day and for, uh, time together in, uh, business for the city. And, Lord, just pray that, uh, what goes on here this evening would be, uh, a blessing. And, Lord, that, uh, you'd be with the ones that are making the decisions. Help them to, uh, um, do so with, uh, the right hearts and, Lord, to, uh, for the best, uh, uh, best outlook for the city. Lord, we just ask for your guidance, your wisdom, and, uh, in all that goes on. We, uh, we give you praise and glory for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
If you'll join me with the pledge of allegiance to the American flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
What were we gonna reorder that item for, Haverly? Okay.
Uh, next item we're gonna attend is citizen participation. This is where we set aside some time to hear concerns. You have a special presentation. Oh, I did. I have two special presentations. Sorry. You can do that. Our first is a proclamation about National Night Out.
Iconic.
Yeah. New members. Well, let's get them all up here. This is a proclamation about National Night Out, twenty twenty-two. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a data community building campaign on Tuesday, October the fourth, twenty twenty-two, entitled National Night Out. And whereas the National Night Out campaign provides an opportunity for neighbors in the city of Jacksonville to join over thirty-eight million neighbors across sixteen thousand communities from all fifty states, U.S. territories and military bases worldwide. And whereas the National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes strong police, community partnerships, and neighborhood co-op to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live and work. And whereas neighbors in Jacksonville assist the local law enforcement agency through joint community building efforts in supporting National Night Out, twenty twenty-two. And whereas it is essential that all neighbors of Jacksonville come together with police and work together to build a safe, more caring community. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Randy Gorm, do hereby call upon all neighbors of Jacksonville to join the National Police, the Jacksonville Police Department and National Association of Town Watch in support for National Night Out on Tuesday, October the fourth, twenty twenty-two. Further, let me resolve that I, Mayor Randy Gorm, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October fourth, twenty twenty-two, is National Night Out in Jacksonville. Signed, Mayor Randy Gorm and Greg Losch. What's your intention with that? Now, might add, I think last year we made nationally top ten. Number four, what? Fifth, this is the nation. We're going for number one this year.
Yes.
Okay. No question. Thank you. Our second one is the Constitution Week Proclamation. Do we have any of the dollars of American Revolution here? This is whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty-two marks the hundred and thirty-fifth anniversary of the draft of our Constitution of the United States by the Constitution of the Constitution. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorial, memorable anniversary and patriotic celebration which commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September seventeen through twenty-three as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Randy Gorm, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Jacksonville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeen through twenty-three as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framework of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that laws' rights may never be regained. And witness whereof, I have hereby to set my hand and call for the solicitor to see to get fixed this thirteen days, September twenty twenty-two. So this is to the dollars of American Revolution, ask us to do this. We'll get that to the proper person. Now, I can get back on with the show. Proper. That agenda item is to, uh, citizen participation. That's where we set aside some time to hear from our citizens. We cannot act upon that, but we'd love to hear their concerns. We have two that have printed a comment card and I was, uh, there's no particular order. If you'll come to the podium, state your name and address, and you can talk to us about your concern. The first one is same particular. We'd like to ask if you'll leave your comments. Go back three minutes.
Hey, no problem.
No problem.
I have a card on my sheet.
You may.
Thank you.
Is this on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The Jacksonville Garden Club met with you all back in January, and our concerns continue to be the Buckner Park need for playground equipment. The existing slide has broken plastic that is dangerous to any kid on the slide. It needs to be either removed or replaced, which we'd like to see it replaced. And wasn't there a grant put forward recently?
That's great.
It's not been approved yet. What's the deal?
It's been approved. It just takes time.
Takes time.
Yes.
Okay. 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 And we're glad to hear, by the way, that the big water oak tree at the park is scheduled to be cut down first part of October. We hated to see the tree die after hanging around for over two hundred and fifty years in our community. It's just really sad. And the Sea Scout Park, I don't know if anybody's been out there to see it, but it looks really bad. It's caved-in roofs, needs to be removed, if not replaced. This also is a hazard to our community. And of course, the fire hydrants still need to be repainted red. So that's our concerns at this moment. And you're gonna get right on that playground equipment, right?
You got it.
Our second, uh, citizen to speak is Mary Catherine Spiller. All right. Your name and address.
Now?
Yes, that'd be great.
Oh, okay. So Mary Catherine Spiller, twenty-eight oh six, Preswood, Jacksonville. Okay. I come before you guys for help with the speeding. I live at Cherokee Club Estates. The tractor trailer rigs, among others, um, go through there. They're coming off a hill. I don't know what the speed limit is. I should've driven down there, but I didn't. Approaching our area. They just need to slow down. That's what they need to do. And going the other way. Even the cars and the trucks, they do not slow down. Now, this has happened twice. This is my biggest complaint. Um, I was coming east on seventy-nine and right there where People's Church, maybe, and the city Dollar General. You have the turning lane, the yellow lanes, twice. Someone has passed a semi in the yellow lanes. And you think you're gonna get hit because you're not, you know, you're looking at the street and all of a sudden you see a car coming right at you. I mean, ridiculous things that's happening. So what I would like to ask is maybe the police could have more presence, even all the way up to where it goes to forty miles an hour. I mean, it's forty-five, or either raise the limit, which I wouldn't suggest. But thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's all we have as far as items to attend. Was there anyone else who wanted to speak during the public discussion?
Mayor, prior to exiting that section of the meeting, I just want to thank Sheriff Dixon for being here and all the ways you help us, uh, around town. Uh, thank you for that. And I wanted to recognize Victor Ontiveros. Victor is the customer service area manager for Encore. Many of you probably knew Tom Trimble. Tom is still with Encore, but has taken over a larger territory centered out of Tyler. And Victor Ontiveros was named as Tom's replacement. He's been with Encore quite some time, started as a lineman, worked his way all the way up. So he's very technically savvy, and he's gonna be a great representative of Encore in this community. And to have the Encore Service Center over there, I believe on Alabama Street in Jacksonville is a huge benefit when it comes to outages in Jacksonville. So Victor, welcome. Congratulations, and we look forward to, uh, building a relationship with you.
Yep.
Our next item is our consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda require a little or no deliberation about council. You see items A through G. If any particular item you'd like to pull out, by itself, we can certainly do that. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
I'm not listening. Will you approve it? I think it's in its training.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hubert Robinson?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallin. Any discussion? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Uh, item, I would like to move item twenty-one up to here. Uh, we have a representative from Schaumburg and Polk. He has another meeting that he needs to attend. And thought out of, to try to save him some time. We'll, we'll deal with item number twenty-one now. Discuss and consider with possible action the resolution approving the submission of an application for a grant from the Texas Parks and Wildlife to construct a walking trail at Lincoln Park and to engage Schaumburg and Polk for grant administration.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, appreciate you moving this up to respect Mr. Haverly's time. Uh, Schaumburg and Polk is who we're gonna be partnering with on a grant submittal per council's approval for about a half-mile walking trail at Lincoln Park. We feel like this would be a great addition to the park. Definitely, definitely generate additional, um, activities and opportunities for people to be in the park and create, um, a feel, a feel of safety and a great environment. Also certainly plays a role in the health of the community. And so it's something we're looking to partner with SPI on. We do have a grant submittal deadline, uh, early next year, but we're just kinda getting it ready and teeing it up. It would be an eighty percent grant. We'd be targeting a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar project. Excuse me, to maximize the three hundred thousand dollar grant opportunity. And no pressure to SPI, but I think they're batting a one hundred on, uh, TPWD grants for us, uh, both the Buckner Park Playground as well as the Boating Access Grant. So we appreciate their assistance navigating these sometimes very arduous grant processes to, to bring free money into Jacksonville. So, any questions?
Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we, um, approve a resolution for the submission of the application for the grant at Lincoln Park.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Rob Goin.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallin. Any discussion we might need? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you. Doctor Haverly, appreciate it. Item number seven is to, uh, consider, discuss and consider with possible action authorizing the city manager to implement the results of the study. So, Mr. James, you wanna talk about that?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, as you're well aware, for about the last year, we've been undergoing a comp and class study. That's been headed up by an outside, uh, organization or, or firm, PayPoint HR. They're out of Maryland. Um, as you're also aware, at four-thirty this evening, we had a public meeting in which Karen Campbell, one of the principals of the firm, presented kind of the results based on the comparators, uh, twenty-five different cities within the region and determined to be statistically similar to Jacksonville, provided responses. Um, and we built a new pay and compensation plan based on those results to maintain competitiveness in the region and take care of our people. You'll see there on the slide a couple notable timelines or bullets along the timeline, uh, the cost. And we'll talk about this, and this was presented as part of your budget, um, review on August fifth, as well as the August City Council meeting. The cost to fully implement this plan to include, um, overtime, healthcare costs, FICA costs is about one point three seven million dollars citywide.
Hearing that, we will, I'll entertain a motion to approve the results of that study.
I'll make the motion that we authorize the city manager to implement the results of our compensation study.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Rob Goin. Second by Councilwoman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number eight is a public hearing to hear and receive citizen input on the proposed twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. Give any explanation before or before?
You can open up the public hearing if you'd like, and then...
So I would like to open up a public hearing, uh, to hear pros or cons. If you'd like to speak in favor of or against, it's your time. Hearing, hearing, seeing none, I will close that portion of the public hearing. Number, number nine is to discuss and consider with possible action an ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget.
Yeah, I'll just give a brief overview. Of course, we had a full budget overview at the August meeting, as well as at the public budget workshop in August. Um, but I want to let everybody know, people are the priority, is the title of this year's budget. That is kind of the overarching belief as, um, defined on our, uh, recently adopted strategy map, taking care of the people that deliver services, but our employees, um, in turn to take care of our citizens with top-notch service. So, um, that's, this is the strategy map with which we developed the budget around, and, uh, we're developing additional metrics and measurables on the, uh, areas of commitment there. Here's kind of a big picture. Again, we're just gonna do a, a snapshot as compared to what we did in August, but big picture, the city's looking at about twenty-nine million dollars in revenue between the different funds. The general fund making up just over fifty percent of that. The general fund is, uh, funded by both sales tax and property tax, and it is the fund that basically delivers most of the services to the city with the exception of water and wastewater, uh, delivery and takeaway. So you'll see that fund at six point eight million on the revenue side, or about a quarter. And grant funds and capital funds making up the remainder of the revenue piece. On the expenditure side for this upcoming fiscal year, we're looking at forty-two million dollars in expenditure. So you see that that does exceed the revenue projections. That's the issuance of debt to start reinvesting into capital. We have about a five point seven million dollar sewer line under, uh, development, and we have about five million dollars of street and, uh, supporting infrastructure improvements in the pipeline. So the capital projects are really gonna start to ramp up. Of course, we've had the sidewalk project going on for about the past four months, maybe five months, and, uh, that's just the tip of the iceberg when it comes to starting to reinvest in our physical infrastructure. And here's some of the major items in the budget. I'm not gonna read them all, but, um, I will say that there's a playground at Buckner Park on the list. Um, there's street improvements at four point eight million. There are sewer improvements at five point seven million. There's Lincoln Park planned improvements, Hazel Tilton Park, which is, uh, directly here behind City Hall. We have some exciting plans that we're working through there. Additional multi-use trails at Love's Lookout. Some additional equipment, definitely vital and necessary to our operations to include a backhoe and a dump truck and a right-of-way tractor. We mow a lot of right-of-way around town, so to have good equipment there saves us valuable time and, and from having downtime. Renovations at a fire station, um, additional demolition of condemned structures throughout town. That's something we have, uh, we're ramping up. We took down about nine this fiscal year, and I think, uh, we're certainly gonna see more of those to come. Um, we do have our compensation adjustments to take care of our folks and maintain competitiveness within the market, especially on our police and firesides. Um, we have a boating access grant with the Lake Concession Park at two million, largely grant-funded, and, uh, a new police officer position as well. So a lot of things in the budget to be excited about. If you want more information, you can find that on our website, the full budget. Um, you can also go back and see the video of last month's, um, council meeting for a little bit greater depth, uh, overview of the budget.
Okay, hearing that, I will entertain a, a motion.
I make, excuse me, I make a motion we approve the ordinance adopting the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget as presented by staff.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallin. Second by Councilwoman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? So we need to take a recorded vote on the, on this. So, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Rob Goin?
A vote. What are we saying? Yay, yes. Okay. Aye. There you go. The ayes have it.
Uh, Mayor Randy Gorm, aye.
Aye.
Mayor, uh, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Hubert Robinson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mindy Gallin?
Aye.
Very good. So that's all. Four ayes. So that, uh, our question passes. Our next item is, uh, another public hearing to hear and receive citizen input on our proposed point six eight one six two tax rate. So I will open our meeting up to a public hearing. If anyone wants to come and speak in favor of or in opposition of our current proposed tax rate, that's your time. Seeing no one, I will close that public hearing. And we'll go to item eleven, is to discuss and consider with possible action adopting a tax rate of point six eight zero six five for one hundred dollar evaluation.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, again, this, uh, I'm gonna do a curtailed, uh, version of what was shared at the August meeting. We are seeking to adopt, uh, actually a slightly lower rate than the six eight one six two this evening, and I'll get into that in a moment, but that is the, the rate that was approved, and that's the rate which, which we've built the budget upon. Just a brief reminder, about every cent of the, on the tax rate generates, uh, currently around eighty-eight thousand dollars in revenue to the city. So you would take, uh, that, that's how you find out what we're bringing on, on the ad valorem side. And then the city of Jacksonville represents about twenty-eight percent of your tax bill if you live inside the city limits. The school district's about fifty percent, and the county is about twenty-three percent between their lateral road district and the county at large. So we're about twenty-eight percent of your total tax bill. That's this current budget year. As tax rates fluctuate within the different taxing entities, that, that, uh, breakdown will shift slightly. Here's a history of the last ten years of the city's tax rate. Um, and you've seen the last two years, um, reductions, just a very minor reduction in the current fiscal year, and then the proposed reduction of just about a penny. And here's, um, where kind of the rubber meets the road. It's the impact of the average homestead. In twenty twenty-two, the average homestead taxable value was one thirteen four ninety-four in Jacksonville. When you applied the tax rate, uh, that we currently have, the six eight nine nine five, that led to a city tax bill of seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. With the increase of, of about seven and a quarter percent in values, the average homestead taxable value now sits at just over a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. And if you apply the proposed tax rate, you're looking at a city tax bill of eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents, or an increase of just under six percent. So when you apply that tax rate and the increase to the average homestead, you're looking at about a forty-seven dollar increase in your tax bill. Mind you, this, um, cost of chemicals and everything's gone up with the city, fuel prices. Um, and this is, again, is the funding source for police, fire, and EMS, streets, library, museum, parks, animal control, code enforcement, administration, development services, and many of the things that get done here at the city to serve the citizens.
Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point six eight zero six five, which is effectively a seventeen point zero nine percent increase in the tax rate.
We have a motion of Councilwoman Mindy Gallin. Second by Councilwoman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion?
I will mention that the decrease, while it being slight from the six eight one six two, was noticed. Um, again, tonight, the council's seeking to adopt a rate of six eight zero six five, or zero point six eight zero six five. Uh, some debt issuance that we closed on after the August meeting came in at a little bit lower closing rate. So on the INS side, we were able to reduce it, and so that's where that, that's where that reduction came from.
Okay, again, we need to take a recorded vote. Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Rob Goin?
Aye.
Mayor Randy Gorm, aye. Uh, Councilwoman Hubert Robinson?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Mindy Gallin?
Aye.
Very good. Four ayes. Item number twelve is a public hearing to hear and receive, uh, citizen input regarding the requested zone change of sixteen point eight point seven acres of abstract forty-one, block thirty-four oh eight, track eleven of the Jose Pineda survey, the west two point six seven two acres of subject property from G Commercial and K Industrial to C Multi-Family Low Density. The remaining fourteen point one seven five acres from G Commercial and K Industrial to A Single Family to allow for the development of a new subdivision. And, uh, discuss and consider with possible action ordinance granting the requested zone change. So I will open up this to a public hearing. If you'd like to speak for or against. Yeah, that is, uh, zone change, now is your time. If you'd like to. Seeing none, I will close that public hearing, and we will go to item B to discuss and consider with possible action ordinance granting the requested zone change.
Yeah, Mayor, City...
On Myrtle Drive.
It is. That's correct. I'll give just a kind of brief presentation on the request. Um, again, the mayor, mayor, thank you for reading that caption. That was a lengthy one. I don't see the applicant here tonight. I know they were in attendance at the P and Z meeting in August, but they are seeking to rezone just over sixteen acres, close to seventeen acres on Myrtle Drive. You see that on the screen here, uh, circled in CAD. And they're, they're basically splitting this property into two different zoning classifications. One to allow for some low-density duplexes, uh, our lowest density that it's allowed by writing our zoning ordinance, and the other to allow for a single-family home construction. So as we take a look at what it currently looks like, and you'll see a little bit of a dash line in the upper left-hand corner of that parcel, uh, encapsulated by the red outline. Um, that's, that's where they're looking to do the low-density multifamily. And then on the remainder of the property, looking at doing single-family. So this is over on Myrtle Drive. And as you look at the site plan, um, currently as proposed, now this isn't locked in by city council action tonight per, by right. They're still allowed to develop this, um, as it's zoned, if it were to be changed tonight. But, uh, currently looking at fifty-four single-family homes and three, um, multifamily low-density, which, again, I believe that's, uh, ten units per acre as opposed to our other categories going to fifteen units per acre or twenty units per acre. So it is our lowest density. And their intent with that, uh, multifamily component being on the far west edge of the property is to buffer from some adjacent mobile home zoning to the, uh, west of the property, which is partially developed, but does have the entitlements for further development. And at the August sixteenth meeting, it received unanimous approval by planning and zoning, and I'm not aware of, uh, the receipt of any letters of opposition for the project.
So I'll, I'll entertain a, a motion on that order.
I'll make the motion. I don't have to read all that, do I? That's crazy. That we grant the requested zone change on item twelve.
We have a, uh, motion by Mayor Pro Tem Rob Goin. Second by Councilwoman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number thirteen is another public hearing to hear and receive citizen input regarding a requested annexation of the new event center located on three point zero four acres of land in block twenty-seven of the Jose Pineda East Ford League Grant, abstract number forty-one, Cherokee County, Texas. So I will open up, uh, this time for a public hearing. If you'd like to come and speak in favor of or against, now is your time. Seeing and hearing none, I will close that public hearing. We will discuss and consider with possible action ordinance approving that requested annexation.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, these items are gonna be very familiar from our August meeting, but per our charter, we have a resolution prior to annexation, and tonight is the action. So we'll have the public hearing on each item. Uh, we've conducted that for thirteen, but thirteen through sixteen are four different annexation actions for council consideration. They are all either city or Jedco-owned properties, Jacksonville Economic Development. They impact no privately-held property within the city. I just want to be clear about that as we get through these items. Again, we, we reviewed them at the, at the August meeting, but this is the three acres that is now encompasses the civic center and the driveway up to the civic center from seventy-nine, and it's currently owned by the city of Jacksonville.
I'll entertain a motion.
Exactly. Where is that going to be again? He said off of seventy-nine?
The old, uh, clubhouse.
It's the old country club clubhouse.
No, it's okay.
I'll make... I'll make the motion that we, um, approve the annexation of the new event center located.
So we have a, uh, motion by...
I'll make the motion that we, yes.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Rob Goin.
Item thirteen, yes.
Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number fourteen is another public hearing to hear and receive citizen input regarding a requested annexation of a hundred forty-four point two nine acres of land which serves as a city... as a city landfill. You don't know where that is, so I'll open this up for a public hearing if you want to come and speak in favor of or against that annexation.
Does that mean we're purchasing it?
No. Okay, so hearing none, we'll close that public hearing and go to the second item, is to discuss and consider with possible action ordinance approving that requested annexation.
You really described it well, so I'm not gonna spend too much more time. The benefit to annexation on this particular property relates to collection of sales tax, so currently, the county and the state are being able to collect sales tax from business generated at the landfill, but the city's being left out, so with annexation comes the ability to generate sales tax revenue and estimate it about fifty thousand dollars a year to the city and twenty-five thousand dollars a year to Jedco based on our percentage breakdown, so significant stream of revenue for the city.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the annexation of the land where the city landfill is currently located.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit.
I'll second.
Second by Mayor Proketa and Rob Goin. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion period. Item number fifteen is to a public hearing to hear and receive citizen input regarding a requested annexation of the golf course, which consists of the following tracks, track one being seventy-eight point seven four acres of land in block number twenty-seven of the Jose Pineda East Four League Grant, abstract number forty-one, Cherokee County, Texas, track two being eighty-two point seven nine acres of land, allowing partly in block number twenty-two, block number twenty-three, and block number twenty-seven of the Jose Pineda East Four League Grant, abstract number forty-one, Cherokee County, Texas. So the public hearing is open. If anyone would like to come and speak in favor of or against, now is your time. Hearing, we have no one wanted to come forward, so we will close that public hearing and go to item B, is to discuss and consider with possible action ordinance granting the requested annexation.
Mayor, City Council, again, this is a hundred and eighty acres currently owned by the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation under lease by, I believe, the Men's Golf Association or Cherokee Ranch Golf Association for access by the public to enjoy the eighteen-hole golf course. Annexation would protect any kind of potential future development, as well as secure a little bit of sales tax from tee times at the golf course.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the requested annexation of the golf course.
We have a motion by Mayor Proketa and Rob Goin.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion period. Our next item is another public hearing to hear and receive citizen input regarding a requested annexation of sixty-nine point oh four acres of land in block seventeen of the Jose Pineda East Four League Grant, abstract number forty-one, Cherokee County, Texas, located at the southeast corner of Highway sixty-nine and Loop four fifty-six. So we'll open this up for a public hearing if anybody wants to come and speak in favor of or against. You're welcome to do so. Seeing or hearing none, we will close the public hearing, and we will go to discuss and consider with possible action ordinance accepting the requested annexation.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, seventy acres owned by Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation, southeast corner of the loop, so right across from D and L Tooling, or generally kind of Christus Mother Francis, just to their south, if you will, currently kind of being used in an agricultural fashion with, I think, some cattle out there, but Jedco secured this property a number of years ago, approximately three, and looking to bring it into the city limits for potential future development.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the annexation of the land on the southeast corner of the loop and sixty-nine.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit.
I'll second.
Second by Mayor Proketa and Rob Goin. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion period. Item number seventeen is the second reading of a resolution in support of economic development incentives. I think we have Mr. Shane Pace, Jedco president.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and City Council members. This evening, we are having the second reading of a resolution, resolution number zero nine dash twenty twenty-two dash zero one. This resolution is up for consideration this evening, is for the approval of an expenditure by Jedco in an amount not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars. This expenditure will provide the necessary funding to continue the matching grant programs that we're currently administering over at Jedco right now. Just to give you a little bit of background for the public who's here this evening, this matching grant program does consist of three different categories, one being our facade grant, the other a demolition grant, and the third is our downtown redevelopment grant. So anyone who's spent some time downtown has seen the, I would say, the progress that's being made down there. I would contribute a lot of that to the capital investment by the property owners, but Jedco's seed funding has been, I believe, instrumental in some of these properties actually turning over and becoming what they are today. Just to give you some basic figures, in this past fiscal year, Jedco reimbursed a total of about a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, but the private investment was a little over one million dollars, so one point zero two million dollars, and so you can see that the investment by the property owners and the business owners in downtown is significant, and I believe that the Jedco funding has helped them hopefully get over some of the hurdles to make some of these a reality. Per state law, this project was noticed in the Jacksonville Progress on July nineteenth of 2022. We held the first reading on September eighth at the City Council Workshop. This is the second reading of the resolution. Again, that's resolution zero nine twenty twenty-two dash zero one, and at this time I'll read the caption. This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Jacksonville, Texas, approving projects of the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation that may include land, buildings, equipment, facilities, expenditures, targeted infrastructure and improvements found by the Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation's Board of Directors to promote new or expanded business development within the City of Jacksonville, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. And with that, I'm open, any questions you may have?
Let's keep moving forward.
I agree.
If not, all in favor, a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution in support of economic development incentives.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Proketa and Rob Goin. Second by Councilman Robert, Hubert Robinson. Any discussion?
Nope.
Shane. Not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion period.
Thank you.
Shane, you're welcome. Item number eighteen is to discuss and consider with possible action approving the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation budget.
Yes, sir, thank you again, Mayor, and Council members. This evening, I am presenting the Jedco budget for consideration and adoption. This was presented to the City Council at your workshop on September eighth, where I went into a significant amount of detail. This evening, I'll give you the Cliff Notes, if that's okay. As you can see on the screen here, this is a summary of the overall budget. Our overall budget this year is a little over three million dollars. What I would note is that our revenue is increasing and our expenses are going down, and that's always a good thing from a physically conservative perspective. However, I would like to note that the majority of that funding, or the expenditures this year, is going back into the community, so two point six six seven million dollars is being reinvested back into Jacksonville, with only about four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for administrative and operational fees. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on the budget for the Jedco.
Any questions? All in favor, a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Jacksonville Economic Development Corporation budget.
We have a motion with Councilwoman Mindy Gellit.
I'll second.
Second by Mayor Proketa and Rob Goin. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion period. Item number nineteen is to discuss and consider with possible action approving a resolution adding a list of action items and risk assessment priorities for the Cherokee County Hazard Mitigation Action Plan in relation to grant application for the new equalization basin at the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, as you recall, a couple months ago, we had Neil Holland of Stokes and Associates visit with us in one of our workshops. The city is currently pursuing or seeking a ninety-ten grant to fund an equalization basin at the Double Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility. This is the facility that processes all the sewage in town. If you're not on a septic, it makes its way to this facility down off of Highway two oh four. It's an estimated three million dollar project, but it would cost the city around three hundred thousand if we're able to obtain this grant. The facility's really close to capacity, and so it's important that the council and the city start to take action toward expanding its capability, so this is really just a step in that grant process, is updating the county's Hazard Mitigation Action Plan.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution on the equalization basin and the risk assessment priorities of the county.
We have a motion by Mayor Proketa and Rob Goin.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion period. Item number twenty is to discuss and consider with possible action awarding the facade project for the remodel of the new event center.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, as we referred to earlier in the meeting, the city did close on the purchase of the former clubhouse at the golf course, probably about six months ago, and I guess in February twenty twenty-two, and we did recently in July put out a request for qualifications for architectural and engineering services there to do some renovations to make it more feasible in use as a civic center. So July twenty-ninth, the city did receive five proposals, and tonight, staff's recommendation, based on a committee's review of the five proposals, is to award the contract to GLNS or GLS. Larry Lassiter and Heath Egan are here, should the council have any questions about their services. We do also recommend including in this contract a potential facade project at the library, so we have the Library Association interested in helping the city fund a library facade, and so we think if we group those two projects together, we kind of get a greater economy of scale, and I will say, I've had the pleasure of working with Heath in the past at the Jedco building, so he's very excellent to work with.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we award a design project to GLS for the remodel of our new event center and public library.
We have a motion by Mayor Proketa and Rob Goin.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion period.
And we have no plans, I mean, we're just engaging them.
That's correct.
And they're the company that originally, I'm right that you all helped design the building?
No, they're basically, based on the qualifications of their firm, they're the best fit for kind of helping us with the future of the facility. They do have project experience here in Jacksonville to include the JISD administration building.
Right, that's what we were talking about, okay.
Item number twenty-two is to discuss and consider with possible action a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for the community development block grant from the United Station Department Housing and Urban Development for utility infrastructure improvements to include replacing a sewer line and lift station, authorizing the city manager to engage Trailer and Associates for grant administration.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, we're still getting some details on this grant in terms of eligible funding and things of that nature, but the application deadline will be in spring of 2023, and we're just trying to tee up a bunch of grant submittals for the city. It's good to try to bring in those funds, and they're force multipliers to get more projects done, so this would be for a sanitary sewer improvement along Sycamore Street from Highway seventy-nine to Sunset, and a package lift station replacement known as the Tremont Lift Station. So again, it's just teeing it up for further grant action and assistance from Trailer and Associates.
So I'll entertain a motion on that one, to consider the resolution authorizing the submission.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution authorizing the submission of the application.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit.
I'll second.
Second by Mayor Proketa and Rob Goin. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion period. Item number twenty-three is to discuss and consider with possible action a resolution approving the submission of an application for a solid waste grant with East Texas Council Government.
Mayor, City Council, another grant application approval, this would be to East Texas Council Government, so that's the fourteen county governing cog, if you will, of our area, Cherokee County being one of the fourteen. The application deadline for this is this week, so this is good timing. We did take all the necessary steps to be eligible to apply. It's a relatively small grant, probably around three to five thousand dollars, but it will significantly offset the cost of what will become likely our second Great Jacksonville cleanup, so we held that event, I believe, back in May, and I think we filled up close to twenty or twenty-two roll-offs over there on the JISD John Alexander Gym property. We had around sixty volunteers cleaning up litter throughout town, a really successful program that we look to expand upon.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve a resolution for the submission of the application for a solid waste grant from Ed cog.
We have a motion by Mayor Proketa and Rob Goin. Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion period. Item number twenty-four is to discuss and consider with possible action a requested replat of lots thirty-five R and thirty-six R, Oak Point subdivision, land taxes.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, this is an extremely minor replat, just ever so slightly shifting the center lot line to create lots thirty-six R and thirty-five R. The surveyors actually here, should you have any questions this evening, Mr. Canyon Hamilton. These lots actually lie outside of the city limits, but they are city lease-held lake lots. If these were inside the city limits and not on the lake, this would be administrative approval by myself, but again, as they are lease lots, our practice has been to come before city council. It's such a slight adjustment, it's extremely hard to see unless you really zoom in, I mean, it's, I think, less than a couple feet of just tweaking one side of the center lot line.
I make a motion, we approve the requested replat of lots thirty-five R and thirty-six R in Oak Point subdivision.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit. Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Discussion? Are both lots owned by the same person or different?
I don't believe so, Mr. Hamilton may be aware.
They do have different, they have different owners.
Okay.
But both ones inside the plat.
Very good. With no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion period. Item number twenty-five is to discuss and consider with possible action accepting a donation from the Jacksonville Soccer Association for improvements of the athletic complex.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, on Bird Road, we have both our youth baseball and softball, as well as our soccer complex. The Jacksonville Soccer Association is seeking city approval to perform some funded renovations to one area indicated here on the exhibit, it's kind of at the, I guess you'd call it the northwest corner, just directly west of the parking lot and concession. They're looking to take what is now one field and doing the dirt work to increase the playing surface and allow it to be used as two fields, albeit slightly smaller than the current configuration, but no city contribution to this project, they're simply just looking to seek city council approval of essentially what will be their in-kind donation to improve the land, costing them approximately thirty thousand dollars, so definitely sounds like a great project, and really impressed with their board and kind of their vision for helping bring more tournaments to the complex, and this is a step in that direction.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, go ahead, go ahead.
Have a motion by Councilman Hubert Robinson.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion period. Item number twenty-six, approve a work order with Stokes and Associates for Canada and Kirkwood Street Sewer Improvement Project.
Mayor, City Council, this is a professional services agreement with Stokes and Associates, you've heard their name a couple times this evening, all pertaining to our sanitary sewer system in town, they are kind of, we do all our work with them on sanitary sewer per previous bidding process. This is for a project over in the area of Canada, in which they'll replace an existing about fifteen-inch sewer line with a thirty-inch to basically improve or mitigate some known INI and surcharging issues in that area. So their cost for the service is eighty-four thousand, it will include the preliminary plans, full plans, bidding assistance, specs, construction inspection, and one thing that was a little unique about this is it also includes their assistance in bidding out and procuring the materials, separate and apart from the overall bid, materials are getting so hard to get- Materials are getting so hard to get and the lead times on them are so long that it's in our best interest to secure the pipe that we know will be necessary for the project on our own ahead, and then secure the professionals to oversee and perform the work. So we're going to start to see that on some of our sanitary sewer projects.
All entertain a motion? We have a motion by Councilman Hubert Robinson.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit, any discussion? Questions? That's just for the engineering costs, right, eighty-four?
That's correct.
Do we have an estimate of what that may cost us?
I think it's looking like around a million-dollar project currently, yeah.
But it's been above that requirement. It's way past.
Yeah, and this project is part of an approved TCEQ kind of sanitary sewer improvement plan that we have going on.
No other questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number twenty-seven is to consider, discuss and consider with possible action accepting a bid of two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for lot number seven, block D, Lake Shore seven.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, we had an auction start date of August eighth of this year and an end date of September sixth, the Tuesday after Labor Day, excuse me. The starting price was two hundred thousand dollars, and this is for council action to accept the highest bid of two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for lot seven. That's the lot furthest away from the Lake Jacksonville Dam, and we'll be discussing re-listing the other six lots in executive session.
All entertain a motion? You accept that?
I'll make a motion, we approve the bid of two hundred and twenty-two thousand for lot seven, block D.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gellit. Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson, you accept that bid of two hundred and twenty-two? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. We're going to drop item twenty-eight from the agenda, which takes us to twenty-nine open forum for Mayor Council.
Who wrote this agenda? It's like an exercise in government language.
You know, you heard a lot of friends tonight, and it's just my two cents, and I think this is maybe a big part of that.
She is.
She brought that expertise to our team, and I want to personally thank you for that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You can leverage our dollars to get us more, it's a pass word.
Thank you.
I hope you see our dedication to parks also.
Yes.
Right, a lot of park improvements in the budget.
A lot of park improvements.
Right, quality of life.
Absolutely.
All right, city manager report?
Yeah, just a couple of items to call everyone's attention to. Again, it's our sesquicentennial, our one hundred and fiftieth year as a town, so September twenty-first, just a little bit, I think it's a week from this, I guess from tomorrow, a week from tomorrow, eleven AM, Hazel Tilton Park, again, that's the park where Central Fire Station was. We're going to have a historic plaque unveiling. This is something that's been in the works for a number of years, and it's exciting that it's coming to fruition in our one hundred and fiftieth year. It's a plaque basically describing kind of all the historical activity of that area over the city's past. So I know Senator Nichols will be there, some individuals from the State Historical Society will be there. We'll have, I think we'll have chairs and podium and PA system, so we hope you'll join us. In the event there were to be inclement weather, we'll come in here for the presentation side of the ceremony. We'll still go out there to unveil the plaque. So you'll see it installed soon with cardboard and duct tape all over it, and on that day, we'll have something nicer over it, and we'll unveil it for the public. It'll be probably moved within the park at a later date as we seek to renovate, but it'll always and forever be in that park. Downtown sidewalk project, it's still going strong. I'd say it's got a lot of wind in its sails right now. The contractor has indicated bringing some additional crews soon. We did get a new superintendent about a week and a half ago. He seems to be very dedicated to helping us complete the project prior to our October twenty-two event, which we'll talk about here in a minute, largely, or they're really kind of centered on the intersection of Main and Commerce at this point in time. And so this photo, I think, was actually taken today where they were hand-floating some concrete there nearest the former Circle of Ten building at the southeast corner of that intersection. So we'll have some bump outs to create a more pedestrian-friendly environment there downtown at kind of the signature intersection of Main and Commerce. So lighting and railings and some of those things will kind of be the bow on the gift here toward the end of the project. We're excited for those enhancements, and I think Victor and his crew have been very helpful. We've removed, I think, five or six utility poles, overhead utility poles, so those aren't generally the prettiest thing. I know you're replacing a lot around town right now, but to remove five wood utility poles from downtown, which are going to be replaced with decorative lights, it's really aesthetically pleasing. And lastly, we'll close the sesquicentennial committee. This is a working committee. They are pounding pavement, they're getting a lot done. I was unfortunately unable to attend their meeting last night, but October twenty-second, we had the slogan of come home, come downtown, come together. The event is growing by the day. It's going to be very, very special. It's really about giving back to the community and definitely the youth of the committee. I would say that by and large, with the exception of the live music, the event is focused on giving back to those who will be there in fifty years at the bicentennial to say, man, remember how good it was fifty years ago. So you'll see a bunch of bunting around town. Those are available through the city's website. Check our Facebook stream if you want to find out how to purchase those, but they're basically at cost or better, and you can, I think you pick them up at the library, but you're seeing them on current city hall, the former city hall downtown, the mayor's office, former mayor Dick Stone's office, they're popping up everywhere. So we encourage you to get those for your business and even your homes in this celebratory time of our one hundred and fiftieth year. That's all I have.
We've got an extraordinary committee, I understand that the city budgeted, I'm not sure, X amount of dollars. I think they have raised Y amount of dollars. They almost matched that number, so we've got the right people in the right seat on the right bus. We appreciate you.
Party time.
Party time. In fact, the choir, we're trying to put together a hundred, you know, big voice choir, and I got a copy of all the music, and I think the final song is, what's the final?
Celebrate.
That's right.
Oh, wow.
That's right.
You can.
All right.
Very good. Well, that concludes our city manager's report. We will now at six fifty-nine go into closing executive session. City Health Conference term for open meetings act for Texas Government Code, sections five fifty-one point oh-seven-one, Councilor of City Attorney, five fifty-one point oh-seven-two, real property, and five fifty-one point oh-seven-six, personnel matters. We will come out of that and if any action comes out of our, for attendance and